All right, we're gonna get our meeting started. Thank you everybody for coming to the meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Westminster. We're gonna begin the... So first of all, thanks for everybody coming out tonight. It's gonna be very fun making these awards and presentations. If you have any electronic devices that need to be silenced, please do so. And we'll begin the meeting the way we usually do with a pledge allegiance and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So our first item on the agenda is the presentation of checks for the Fall Fest charities. Mayor? Mr. Ken Horak, please come forward. Any member else on Fall Fest wants to come forward?
Unfortunately, most of them couldn't make it today.
How you doing?
Good evening. I'm Ken Horak, President of Westminster Fall Fest. And I'd like to start off by acknowledging our sponsors. We'll start off with the City of Westminster.
We appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you very much. Then we have Westminster Patch, Quantum Internet Service, WTTR Radio, Carol Eagle, The Community Media Center, Carroll County Times, Goodwill Industries of Monocacy Valley, Carroll Community Bank, BB&amp;T, Brian Wagner Web Design, and Co. Creative. And those sponsors either helped us out with services or monetary donations. Westminster Fall Fest Board consists of seven members. It's myself as President, Marshall Graham, Marshall Graham, Marshall Green, Lori Graham, Sue Horak, Tom Cannon, and who am I missing? Is that all of them?
Abby.
Abby Gruber, yeah, and Robin Turney, I'm sorry. There are two newest ones, that's why. We had 290 volunteers this year to help put Fall Fest on. Three of those volunteers I would like to give a big hand to because they stepped up and without their help, Fall Fest would have been in a serious bind this year. We'd have got it done, but they definitely made our life a lot easier. The first two was Rick and Laura Schoenfield. They helped us with the bingo tent. And the next person would be Nikki Hatcher. I can't say enough good about Nikki. I mean, when it came time to put on a parade and I was thinking, "Who can I do it?", I get an email from Nikki saying, "You need help?". So can we give those folks a hand? And of course, we have Special Olympics of Maryland, Carroll County, Stacey Davis Breast Cancer Fund, and Good News Jail and Prison Ministries. They were our chosen charities. And that's why we're here tonight, because they want one of these. This year, each one of our chosen charities gets $7,500. So if you'd like to present a check, Good News, Good News Jail and Prison Ministries, would you like to step up?
It was a, just an amazing time for us to be part of this great city event, county-wide event actually. And us being the new kids on the block, we really didn't know what to expect. But after the four days was over and the team that we had, you know, wiped the sweat off their brows, we said, "Wow, this was great." And it was so wonderful to connect with the community. And so we were very blessed. And as the chaplain, right here in our local detention center, and Analog's then also, she sits on our chaplain support team, and I have some chaplain support team members here. Could you stand up, please? These are part of the board that keeps me... That says, well, I think we're missing a couple, but this is part of the board that keeps me straight. So I'm just so grateful. We are very blessed to be part of the community. So thank you so very much. This event is a, just a terrific thing to connect with the community. And, you know, we look forward to next year. Thank you very much.
Stacey Davis Breast Cancer Fund. Dawn DiMario.
Congratulations.
See, we're getting out of here without a hug.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So Stacey Davis Breast Cancer Fund has been selected two years in a row, last year and this year, for the Fall Fest. We worked at the scarecrow tent. We're used to, I am used to perfectly polished fingers and toes and hair. And working the scarecrow tent was quite an experience. I loved it, loved it. I didn't know I loved other people's children so much, but, so I kind of got to know something about myself over the last two years during the weekend. And I'm grateful, actually, for that. So Stacey Davis Breast Cancer Fund is celebrating next year, our 10th year. Our foundation gives money locally to women and their families who are suffering from breast cancer, so only the women in Carroll County or their families who are suffering with breast cancer. To date this year, we've given away $53,000 in grants. We've helped over 30 women and families in Carroll County just in 2013. Thank you, Ken, for awesome leadership. More importantly, Sue, for helping him lead.
That's the leader behind him.
She kept us straight. We know, we know. Ken and Marshall, Lori, Sue, Abby, and Robin, I'm really thankful for all your time and all that you do for the community. God calls us to serve. This committee, the Fall Fest Committee, serves with grace, and I've learned a lot of sweat. So you guys really get it done. I've learned a great deal from this committee, and I thank you very much. Our committee actually has received $16,000 in two years from the Fall Fest. So yay. I'll get my check.
Who's for your picture?
I'll get my check.
And you're donating this back?
Back to the women. Thanks. Thank you.
And our last, but definitely not least, will be Carroll County Special Olympics.
Thank you once again. This is our second year also. We are more than just the Spring Games. You see, at Westminster High School, we actually have 19 programs that run year-round, beginning at the age of two now. And some of our oldest volunteers and athletes are in their 60s and 70s. So we're still going strong. One of our soccer teams have actually been picked to go to Nationals in New Jersey beginning, it's over the summer, so they need to keep practicing and practicing. So this donation will reinforce their time in the soccer field. I couldn't have done this. I decided to go back to school in August and am in school still till next two weeks. And Laurie Bruin-Dana McGuire, stand up. Stand up. They stepped up tremendously so I could go back and will be in school now for the next couple of years. But I thank them a lot for helping me this year, since I had to step back, and helping me with lots of Special Olympics stuff. Special Olympics, on a personal note, has made me a totally different person. I've had my mom cry, I've had friends support me, but the most, the bestest thing, as my son would say, is that he is able to come with me and volunteer with me and see how much we help the athletes and their families every day. So this is great for him, and he's hoping for no school tomorrow. So he's at home getting a shower and wearing his pajamas inside out, upside down, for tomorrow. But thank you guys again, and we appreciate it.
Alrighty, and you'll notice we only had three charities this year, but we made two. Now, next year, our charities that were chosen for next year are Special Olympics of Carroll County, Good News Jail and Prison Ministries, Carroll Hospice, and the Action Club headed up by the Kiwanis. Once again, I'd like to thank you and have a good evening.
And we're gonna move on with awards. I have notes here. Okay. We're gonna do Miracle on Main, right? Or, no, that's not where we're going. We're doing the Mayor's Cup first. Okay. Thanks to everyone who entered our annual Mayor's Cup Holiday Decorating Contest. We had 16 eye-grabbing entries this year, making our downtown beautiful and the judges' job difficult to determine the winner. In a closely contested contest, the Good Time Gals braved the elements during a rainy Thanksgiving weekend, and just a few votes separated the winners from the runners-up. It's my pleasure to announce that the 2013 winner is the Flower Box Two. This can be displayed proudly in your place of business. And do you have anything to say?
Just, it's an honor. Thank you very much. It was fun. And everybody in the shop, you know, got to create and be creative, and we did it all as a team, so that's how we do everything there, so thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. Just so everyone knows, in TV land, the Mayor's Cup is a coveted award, which is now engraved with the name of Flower Box Two. We hope you'll showcase it proudly for the year to come. Congratulations also to the Snoopershop, which was first runner-up, and 2012 champions Sturgill and Associates, who came in third place. Thank you all for making your storefronts beautiful for the downtown during the holiday season. Without the businesses being involved, it creates a very difficult task for us as government to help support you. But being involved, it is a true treasure for the Main Street, so thank you again. It's my pleasure this evening to announce the winners of the 2013 Miracle on Main Street Electric Holiday Parade. A panel of three judges consisting of local business owners assessed each parade entry on theme, detail, and brightness in the following award categories: Spirit of the Season, Best and Brightest, and Main Street Champion. All winners receive $100, a trophy, and of course, bragging rights. First, I'd like to recognize Shirley and Richard Daniels, accepting on behalf of Carroll Luthen Village for their winning entry that best reflected the Spirit of the Season Award. And we have pictures, good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And do you have something to say?
Well, on behalf of the residents of Carroll Luthen Village and the staff, we appreciate the honor and this award. And I know the residents would really love to see it. It is a resident project, not, we have the marketing pays for it, for the materials, but all the effort is residents. Thank you.
Thanks for being involved in our community.
And life is sweet at Carroll Luthen Village. That was the theme of our cookie float.
Very nice. Thank you. The next award goes to Bob Wimmer, representing Carroll County Veterinary Clinic, for their entry that earned the award for Best and Brightest.
Yeah, I do wanna, the rest of the staff wanted to come, but they're at the Christmas party right now, so I'm missing dinner for this. But I wanna thank, this is our fifth year doing it. It's a great event. One year, I looked forward to actually seeing the parade. But I mean, I really appreciate the, all the volunteers who put it together, and we really enjoy doing it. Look forward to doing it again next year.
Thanks. Merry Christmas. And last, but certainly not least, will Melissa Wolf and J.C. Cuckendall please come forward on behalf of the Home Depot to accept the Main Street Champion Award? Now, this was a great honor. The judges all felt that it was a worthy award. Do you have any words of wisdom?
Well, on behalf of the Home Depot, we really had a great time being part of your community. This event, we look to, look forward to every year. And if I could just make one comment, Dennis Kepling did all the work. So we're getting all the glory tonight, but he really did actually do all the work. He's really creative, and we look forward to next year. So thank you very much for having us as part of the community. We really, really enjoy it.
Thanks, appreciate your... Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I wanna shout out a big thank you to all of our 2013 parade entries. Your creativity, time, and attention to detail make this parade a proud Westminster tradition. Thanks to the Graham Dutter Welsh family, who first brought it to us from an idea they had. The Miracle on Main Street Electric Holiday Parade could not exist without your support and participation. And I would like to also shout out to the staff of the City of Westminster and Parks and Recs for all that they have done. The support also from one company that it wouldn't happen without the batteries. On behalf of Interstate Batteries, we wanna shout out a big thank you to Mark Desbury, owner of Interstate Battery, for his steadfast support of his phenomenal staff and community organization on his part, getting batteries and inverters to all the floats that are in need of such to keep their parade entry lit during the parade. This year, we can also thank the Desbury family and Interstate Battery for bringing us Santa to downtown in Westminster style. Our hats to you for securing the majestic red six-horch hitch pulled by the stately Pine Creek Perchance horses. It was quite a sight to see, many onlookers described it as breathtaking. For all of your efforts, he is gonna be awarded the Powerful Partner Award. So he'll, he wasn't here to accept it tonight, but he will get the award. I would also like to encourage Penguin, recognize and thank the Penguin Random House for their generous sponsorship of the parade. Happy holidays, and don't forget, it's never too early to start planning for your float next year. I appreciate all of your attendance and thank you for the community's support. Have a happy holiday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're going to continue with the business portion of our meeting. If anybody, you're welcome to stay for that, but if you're not interested in that, you're welcome to step out at this point. We wouldn't be offended. All right, our next agenda item is approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 25th. Hope everyone's had a chance to review them. Motion in a second. Any additions, deletions, corrections, amendments, notifications? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no public hearings, and we have one item on the consent calendar, renewal of the letter of credit for BB&amp;T Bank for a million dollars. Ms. Palmer?
This is the safety letter of credit that you used last year. It allows us to borrow up to a million dollars with little or no notice if we get into a cash flow issue. It's essentially a safety net. We did not draw it up or any at all this year. If we do draw on it, we pay back at prime rates.
Any other questions of Ms. Palmer?
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar?
There's a motion?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion or question? Hearing none? All in favor of approval of consent calendar?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar's approved. Mr. Mayor, report. I really don't have anything other than, again, thanking the staff for an outstanding week and months of planning and bringing joy to all of our community during the holiday season. We got rained out on one of the events, but still, we were there prepared. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reports from standing committees. Mrs. Albert?
Yes, I would just like to pass on a greeting for the merriest of Christmas and the happiest of New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. Mr. Kowachi?
Two quick things. I'd like to compliment both Mr. Glass and the chief. They do a lot of work in the background when we have these snow emergencies. And, you know, chief, all your communications and working at the U.C. and all. And then Mr. Glass, you know, your guys out there. I mean, I drove in from Oakland yesterday. I left at 9:30 and got into town about 3:00. And Westminster was in far better shape than everything in between Oakland and here. And it just struck me, as I came into town, I thought, "This is great." And you guys just do a wonderful job, and I'd like to say thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
I have to say two things, but I really meant both of them. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kowachi. Mr. Frazier?
The only thing I'd like to say is, you're up in the house, the last Monday was really nice. When I got there, it was packed. All the food was great, decorations were outstanding. Can't say enough good things about it. I really enjoyed it. Thank you, everyone responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Whitson?
I would echo Mr. Frazier as well about last week. Thank Mr. Mayor and all the people that were involved with that. It was really, really nice. Also, the Festival of Rees that they have down there at the Art Center is very, very nice as well. Thank, I echo the thanks especially to the people who take care of the streets as no problems. Really appreciate all that you guys do and make sure that Mr. Bloom knows that.
I will do that. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. I had the opportunity to drive from Westminster to Frederick for my other job in the height of the storm, and Westminster was in far better shape than Frederick. So I echo Mr. Kowachi's compliments. We have no bids, no ordinances, no unfinished business, one item of new business, a motion to cancel the meeting of December 23rd.
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Motion in a second. Any discussion, objections, concerns, debate? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the meeting of December 23rd is canceled. Ms. Wolf, Departmental Reports?
Yes, before we get on to our reports, I would like to do two things. I'd like to, on behalf of the staff, wish the Mayor and Common Council Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and to give you the thanks of the staff and the extra time on over the holidays. That was most appreciated, particularly since they're all having work over the weekend. This is, thanks for your nice time. Steve?
Thank you. One item, the Board of Zoning Appeals be meeting January 7th. We've been approached by Waste Markets about a gas-and-go at the Waste Market. So that requires a special exception approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that will be January 7th. That's all I have.
Really no report, but to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you for the additional time as well.
We are in the process of carefully putting away all of our holiday decorations and activities from Santa's treat, so we're taking this opportunity to clean out our storage closets at Recreation and Parks, which has been an interesting endeavor, to say the least. So we're getting that tucked away so that it's organized and ready to pool out next year. And we are enjoying some downtime at this point, where we'll begin to really fine-tune our event planning for the upcoming year and come up with sound timelines for the press and all of the other associated pieces that go into those events, when we're going to put out applications, when we'll open certain things for registration, and those types of items of business. So this is certainly a time that we have in the back of our minds as we are busily rushing through our summer, fall, and early Christmas season. So we're relaxing and enjoying, and we certainly hope that you have the same opportunities as well. So thank you very much for the additional time, and happy holidays to everyone.
On behalf of the Financial Department, the same, we really appreciate your support over the last year. We feel like we really made a lot of leaps and bounds this year, and we don't think we could have without you, so we appreciate that. The same, we'd like to wish you all a happy holiday season.
For the second week in a row, I feel like I'm delivering bad weather, dude. We are expecting another winter storm over, well, not overnight tonight so much, but early tomorrow morning coming in and lasting through the early afternoon. Talking about three to five inches of additional snow in our area, and really expecting it to snarl traffic, particularly in the morning commute, probably less in the afternoon commute. But communicating with Jeff and the Streets Department, we're prepared for it, and we out there patrolling the streets, making sure everybody's safe. And thanks to all for all your support throughout the year, and best wishes to all. Happy holiday and a prosperous new year.
Chief, can I ask one question? Freedom teacher, huh? What time do you think that, are you... You're about to head here.
You get teachers at all?
Semi-awar.
So I do expect that we'll act upon that. There is a conference, a weather conference called 5:00 in the morning that I'll be anticipating into, as will they in County Emergency Management, but I think it's probably gonna be a tough thing to get kids to school, only to have to turn around and grab some of that kind. But I'll let them make that difficult decision.
Thank you.
Geez, I've been all the wishes for the holiday, I hate to bring up two items of business, but I have to. Number one, I went to the Mayor of Municipal Chapter meeting. The mayor was unable to make it because his brother won another award. But this was a legislative meeting... to make it because he's got another award, but this was a legislative meeting, all the legislators were there. Two things were very interesting. Thing number one, the legislative agenda for the Maryland Municipal League is to get back the highway user revenue. What it appears they're going to settle on is we'll get the same amount we got this year, which is more than we expected because it's that $15 million grant. They're calling it a grant again, so everybody gets it in their mind that it comes every year, but that was a good piece of news. The second item that they have is a group that's studying the town-counting agreements and everything, and how that process works, and it works differently in all the counties that have incorporated municipalities, and this comes up from time to time, and it's just a study group now, and is designed to make a report to the legislature during the session. So I thought that was very interesting because we talked about whether that's the right amount that we get or not. The other thing is we are still working on our Stormwater Management Fund. At this point, it's not a fee, but at the MML Dinner, everyone of the commissioners who was in attendance, led our legislators to believe that we already have this agreement, and we're already moving forward with a plan to incorporate the municipalities into the County Stormwater Management Fund. I think that that probably needs a little bit of adjustment yet, but we have a meeting set up on the 18th with the managers. This has been sent back to the WRCC to come up with a plan, so we will dutifully do that. I think since everybody's in such a happy mood to be cooperative, that should translate into dollars, but that's just my thinking right now, so we'll see how that goes. That concludes my report unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. We're now at the point in the meeting where we entertain citizen comments. If anybody would like to be heard, please state your name and address for the secretary.
Well, Tommy, you're it.
Yes, sir.
Come to the microphone. Yes, sir. Need to be seen on television.
I'm talking over 776 Winchester Drive, it's just outside the city limits. Saturday morning, I found myself reluctantly working the bell for Salvation Army, and trying to kill two hours, I was observing the city officers with shot with a cop, and, you know, I don't know who gives credit, but I'm directed to Sergeant Spaulding, that I watched the officers one-on-one with these young children walking through the stores. The children were so proud as they walked out of the stores with gifts for their families, with all the police officers. It was more than just going through the motions. They really cared about these kids and made sure those kids had a great experience, whether it was turning the lights on, or ringing the siren, or whatever it happened to be. I said something to one of the officers, I said, who's guarding the town? And he quickly pointed out that these were the, they were on their own time that morning, so I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Tommy. It was a great event. I appreciate the mayor and Councilman Whitson coming out to welcome our shoppers that day. We had 21 children from nine families in our local community. They were really treated to an excellent Christmas, and it was a great opportunity for them to bond with police officers in a very positive way. I really have to send my thanks out to the community. We have such a generous community here. We put an angel tree up in Walmart, and through that process garnered more than 300 gifts that were donated anonymously by members of our community that went to our needy families. In addition to that, Walmart provided $150 per child to shop for their other family members.
Wow.
And a number of businesses, 70 or 80 in total, supported our effort in one way or another, so it was really a banner year. We will take forward a treasury that will be able to use for other events throughout the year. We'll be doing a back-to-school program in August, and then, we even talked about perhaps something around the Easter holiday. So it really is the generosity of the community that drives this, and it's a very dedicated planning team in the Police Department and other partners around the city. Abby's a member of that planning team. It's not me, it's that planning team that really makes things happen behind the scenes, so I publicly thank both the community and the members of the planning team for facilitating that now in our tent year.
All right, where's Jerry?
The businesses are communicating with one another. Our small business Saturday was unprecedented. You hired the best possible person to run Parks and Recs. She's an outstanding partner, incredible creative energy, that we work really well together, and honestly, the other downtowns in Carroll County are working better together because of the support that you allow me to give them, and it can't happen without you, all of you, so I just want to thank you so much for making me have such a beautiful job.
You do a good job of it, Missy.
Thank you. Sorry about that.